Good morning, everyone. This virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities and Emergency Response is now called to order at 9:00 a.m. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on May 13, 2020, with the second notice provided on May 18 of 2020. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. The committee will hear testimony on Bill Number 298-35 and Act to amend Section 77704, Section 77705, Section 77706, and Section 77710, all of Chapter 77, Title 12, Guam Code annotated, relative to the rehabilitation and improvement of the Harmon Industrial Park, introduced by Senator Joe S. Sinagastin and co-sponsored by Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Jose Pito Terlai, James C. Moylan, William M. Castro, and myself. I would like to provide the panel participants with some general rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing, the ground rules, all participants must abide by the rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including broadcasting from a quiet room with little to no interruptions, broadcasting from a room with adequate lighting specifically to ensure the participants' faces visible and not backlit, and ensuring that the participants' faces visible at all times while speaking. Please ensure that you are unmuted when you are speaking and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their full name and title for record purposes. And for group settings where more than one individual is present, please state your name before providing comment. We'll begin with the panel of senators who shall complete their lines of questioning for each respective item on the agenda. Each member will be allowed to pose one question to an individual testifying for one round and be provided another round if necessary. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting room by the host. And I would like to welcome all of my colleagues who are joining me today. Thank you to senators, welcome Senator Joe Sinagastin, Senator Jim Moylan, Senator Rajine Bisco Lee, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Senator Telo Titigui. Welcome to all of my colleagues, thank you for joining us today. We will now hear from the primary sponsor of the bill to provide his opening statement on the measure. Senator Joe Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on Bill 298-35COR. The Harmon Industrial Park Association, or HIPAA, has worked diligently in addressing the needs of the industrial park when it comes to infrastructure. They took the reins of a tax credit authorized in Public Law 33191. They created a public-private partnership to address road issues in the park area. Today, we see that their practice of frugality, say money without jeopardizing the quality of work, and they are seeking support in this bill by authorizing use of the money saved to address other areas with road improvements. For decades, this area has been designated as Guam's hub of economic development and has continued to be a bustling gem for Guam businesses, not only in Harmon but throughout the island. Over the years, not only in Harmon but throughout the island. The gem has some of its luster. Today, they are starting to look like the true gem it was credited to be with the improvements in road pavements. The Harmon Industrial Park area has been a major contributor to the life of Guam and Micronesia. We must look at HIPAA as a prime example of frugality when dealing with our government finances. They took the initiative to seek out an expansion of the road projects they completed into the areas that needed improvement to help build the capacity of the historic Harmon Industrial Park area. At the end of the day, there's no fiscal impact to the General Fund or the Healthy Futures Fund as the bill proposes amendments to credits of excise tax. I wish to thank the co-sponsor of the bill, Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, yourself, Senator Joe, Senator Pito Terlai, Senator Moylan, and Senator Castro. During these trying times, our businesses are working diligently to keep their businesses afloat. We can be the catalyst to help them continue their contributions to our economy and our island. I look forward to hearing the testimonies on this bill and working with the committee to get this out in its best, in its earliest possible form. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time and for hearing this bill. Sisus Maase.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. I'd also like to recognize Senator Therese Terlai. Thank you for joining us this morning. All right, I will begin in the order that we have on our sign-in sheet today. I have listed here, but I don't see if they're online right now. Melanie Mandiola, Administrator of GITA. Vincent Ariola, Director, DPW. I don't believe he's here, so I'll move on. Let's see, the Mayor of Timuning, Luis Rivera, I don't believe she's online either. Correct me if I'm mistaken, so we will go next to Frank Shimizu Jr., Sales Manager of Ambrose Inc. Mr. Shimizu, please don't forget to unmute. Melanie Mandiola is actually online now, so we can actually begin with her, the Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority. Good morning, Melanie. Please go ahead and begin your testimony today. Please unmute. If you're not ready to begin, I can go to someone else.
I'm ready to begin, thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties I was having. I was...
No problem.
Actually, just give me one. Actually, if you wouldn't mind going to one more person? Do we have?
Sure.
Oh, great, thank you so much. Okay, here we go. And we've also, we emailed this to you as well, for your records. Hafadeh, Senator Rajel, and the committee, since the passage of Public Law 33... Just give me one minute, there's one second, there's...
Emergency vehicle in the background, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hafadeh, Mr. Chair.
Begin, please, with formally introducing yourself. Thank you.
Yes, Hafadeh, my name is Melanie Mandiola, and I'm the Administrator and CEO of the Guam Economic Development Authority. Since the passage of Public Law 33191 on December 13, 2016, this public law has returned to elisator in Guahan on two occasions, which brings us to this occasion, the third. I wanted to just give you a background of where we were with the previous two iterations and to kind of bring you up to date with where we are, which is pretty much at the same place. So on December 13, 2016, Public Law 33191 was enacted into law. The initial credit period was for four years. Architectural and engineering design must be completed within 90 days after enactment and approved by elisator in Guahan. On June 7, 2017, amendments were approved by Public Law 34-10, extending the tax credit period from four years to five years, and extending the deadline to submit the A&E design for approval to May 1, 2018. December 28, 2018, the A&E design was approved by Public Law 34-10. And the current Bill 298-35 proposes to use, change use excise tax to excise tax, excluding those tobacco taxes pledged to the Healthy Futures Fund, allowing any excess tax credits to be used on additional streets in Harmon Industrial Park not identified in the original design. For GITA, there will be no further impact as there are no additional tax credits being proposed, and we are already administering this program pursuant to the original law as amended. And so that's pretty much it for us. There's no impact to our agency or its functions in the administration of this tax credit program. But of course, should you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me and the team here at GITA. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. I will move on now to Frank Shimizu Jr.
This is Frank Shimizu Jr. I submitted a written testimony.
I see. Okay. Mr. Monte McDowell.
Thank you, Senator. I submitted a written testimony, but I would like to read it for the record, so everybody kind of gets a favor of where we sit. I'm Vice Chairman of the Harmon Industrial Park Association, primarily because Frank Shimizu Sr. told me I am. And, but I'm also, I've also been a businessman since I retired from the Navy, right here in beautiful downtown Harmon, since 1990, so 30 years I've been here. So I'll start my written testimony. Hafadeh, Senators, our company, Advanced Management, Inc., is located on Adrian C. Sanchez Street, also known as Hamburger Highway Harmon. We find that several times a day, we must venture in and around Harmon Industrial Park proper for purposes of conducting essential business. The 250 employees of our company are absolutely delighted that the Harmon Industrial Park Association and the Guam Legislature have partnered to improve what was deplorable road conditions of the area. Venturing into Harmon Industrial Park was a negative experience, but now it's quite improved, at least when driving on the main road. Any turn off the main Harmon Industrial Park main road results in a quick return to roads of severe degradation. A company is very pleased that the 35th Guam Legislature has Bill Number 298-35 in draft form. This bill, once enacted, will allow for interior Harmon Industrial Park roads to receive some highly-needed professional paving. We understand this would occur without any additional monetary resources other than those legislated in Public Law 33191. The quality of life of the businesses in Harmon Industrial Park and its customers would greatly improve. As with the bill that generated Public Law 33191, this would once again provide the businesses and residents of Harmon Industrial Park a clear picture that the 35th Guam Legislature sincerely cares, as demonstrated by its lawful passage of this bill, as a subsequent professionally-laid pavement that would result. This would further enhance the quality of life of those that travel these highways. Your assistance in passage of Bill 298-35 is highly appreciated.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDowell, for your testimony. We will proceed now with... Let's see, is there Mark Mamsars in attendance today? He's signed up, but I'm not sure if he's in attendance, I don't see. Also, please allow me to recognize a speaker for joining us this morning. Thank you very much for joining us this morning, Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, thank you. All right, so if there is a Mark Mamsars online, I don't, I'm not sure. If not, we will proceed to Mr. Zenon Bellinger.
My name is Zenon Bellinger, and the Construction Manager for the Harmon Industrial Park Association Improvements. We started, the project started in mid-November with the construction of the Harmon Metal Lane Road, which connects Hamburger Road to Harmon Industrial Park. That was opened on December 27, and it relieved a lot of the traffic congestion in Harmon. Since then, since the beginning of the year, we've been marching down Harmon Industrial Parkway, and we're about 1,200 feet, 1,200, 1,300 feet from the end, which is down by Seeket Street, or behind the auto shops and behind DPW. So we've done, the contractor has completed the paving all the way up to Ilpog Drive, which is the street that connects Marine Drive by GTA into Harmon Industrial Park. So the remaining work that we have is the paving of the, of Harmon Industrial Park, the last 1,200 feet, and then about 700 feet on Ilpog Drive, and then the minor things like adjustment of manholes and traffic signs and traffic markings. So that's where we're at. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bellinger.
Yep.
We will move on now to Mr. Tom Shimizu from Ambrose Inc. Mr. Shimizu.
Good morning, Senators. Good morning, everyone. My name is Tom Shimizu. I'm a registered voter and General Manager of Ambrose Inc. I'm testifying in support of the bill for several reasons. The work to date has improved the lives of my 95 employees in many ways. Before the improvements, when there was really one viable way in and out of the park, it would take up to 45 minutes during peak traffic to get from our facility to Marine Drive, and our facility is located by NSG. That's probably not even half a mile to have a 45-minute commute. That's unheard of because nothing on Guam is more than 20 minutes away, except for Marine Drive from Harmon Industrial Park. Another, so that's, I mean, that's the improvement to our commute is incredible. In addition to that, our employees have fewer flat tires because of potholes, fewer damaged tie rods, you know, because of the rough conditions. Also, because all three ways in and out of the park are paved, many travel distances for our employees have been greatly reduced because instead of going all the way around Marine Drive to go from, for example, Mighty, go all the way around Marine Drive, he can cut right through Teza now and go connect in through behind Home Depot. So that's reduced more time and money saved for our employees. It's been benefit for the company as well, you know, the same thing, there's less damage to our trucks, less damage to the product from all the bumpy roads and the shifting. And so it benefits the company, but it also directly benefits our employees because, you know, our company shares profits, so when we can save costs, that just goes right to our employees' pockets, and we all, we all need that. And all the benefits I talk about are a result of the work that has been done. But yes, the main road is done, but there are many more thousands of feet of secondary roads, and if, you know, this bill passes, it will just, it will allow for more of the roads to be, to be fixed. Ideally, everything would be done, but short of getting everything, at least we can do a few more hundred or thousand feet with the budget that has been set aside already and like Melanie from GITA said, will not impact anything. So again, please thank you, Senators, for your support, and please pass the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shimizu, for your testimony. All right, next on the list, there's a couple more people on the list, but I don't think the, I don't see them here, who've signed up, so I'll move on to Mr. Stephen Carrera Mr. Carrera, please unmute. It should be in the right, upper right, there you go. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good morning to everyone. I'd really like to, I'm Stephen Carrera, General Counsel for IT&amp;E. We have approximately 320 employees in the Harmon Industrial Park, and we would like to thank the legislature and especially the Shimizu family for pushing this legislation because it's resulted in great improvements to the park and to the entire community beyond the park. As Tom was saying, leaving Harmon in rush hour time would create ridiculous traffic jams just to get to Marine Corps Drive. Now that there are numerous ways in and out, traffic could move freely, it makes less of a burden on Marine Corps Drive, so anybody who's traveling on Marine Corps Drive has benefited by these improvements, and the quality of the work has been outstanding, and it's coming much cheaper, and really emphasizes what Senator Sinagastin said about a public-private partnership and doing things more efficiently. And another related benefit is, if you might, for those who travel in a park, you might notice between, from Home Depot coming to Harmon Industrial Road, there was a lot of dumping going on there, illegal dumping, and now that that road is paved, there's much more traffic on the road. I've seen a lot less dumping, so I think this has been a great thing. I hope the legislature could consider more of these type of projects, and thanks to Mr. Frank Jr., because I know he really pushed this, or Senior, he really pushed this legislation for years and drove the development of the Harmon Industrial Park, and like I said, the whole community benefits from this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. All right, there's a few more people again who've signed up, but I don't see them online with us this morning, so I'll move on. Mr. Simon Sanchez.
Buenas, Senator. Thank you so much for allowing me to participate and testify in Public Bill 35298. As everyone reminds us properly, Frank Shimizu was really the driving force behind all of this to get us to this point, and I'm glad to see that the legislation, you know, recognizes that you needed some financial flexibility in terms of the source of revenue to fund this, and yet, as everyone has said, it's a perfect partnership, the private sector and the government getting together a few years ago, now you and your colleagues are stepping forward to fix it and tweak it and make sure it does what it was originally intended to do. I'm proud to say Guam Dry Cleaners, I'm the Vice President and General Manager, Guam Dry Cleaners is in the 48th year of its lease with the Guam Economic Development Authority in the Harmon Industrial Park. We, GITA actually created this park, Frank Perez and others took the lead, and we may be the oldest remaining lease still in the park, and we still, my employees and my customers have been driving on the old road for 48 years. I've been driving on the old road and so happy to see the new road after 32 years, so we may have put in the most miles on the old road, and we look forward to putting in more miles on the new road with our neighbors. I think people, and I think Steve alluded to it, there's retail here, it's not just an industrial park, there's retail sales here, wholesale sales, housing, apartments, restaurants, construction, and services, so the park has really matured into quite a hub of activity, and, but no hub can be successful without transportation that works smoothly, and it's just night and day between what it used to be like for so many decades and what it is now, many more ways to access, you're benefiting thousands of taxpayers, thousands of customers, and thousands of employees, and so we're very grateful that you and your colleagues continue to push the need of changes. The private sector brought it in below budget, we're glad to see you can do some of the side roads because that's where some of the apartments are, that's where some of the smaller vendors are, they're on those smaller side roads, they're not on the main roads, and to the degree we've saved money and you're allowing us to spend that on some of these side roads is excellent. And so I just wanted to, I was called by our leader to make sure that I would participate in expressing our support for the bill. I'm grateful to the senators that see the need of changes. I know it's a tough time to ask the legislature to find funding sources, and while we brought it in under budget, you know, you're having to play around with the excise tax language, and I think you're doing it appropriately, but the work has been done in good faith by the private sector, and it's great to see the good faith of the legislature stepping forward to say honoring the commitment of your predecessors and carrying out the intent of the law so that many, many of your citizens can benefit. So I just want to thank you for this effort and express my support for the legislation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Frank Shimizu. Mr. Shimizu. If you look in the upper right-hand corner of your screen that shows you, there should be a button there that you can press to unmute.
Yes, I'm...
Thank you. There we go.
Good morning. Buenos, mananas, sijuz, and hafadeh, Senators. My name is Frank Shimizu. I am a tenant of Harmon Industrial Park as well as a private citizen traveling through this area. On behalf of the businesses, the residents, and the general public that travel through the Harmon Industrial Park, we humbly ask the legislature to please consider helping us as follows. The current legislation allows HIPAA, that's the Harmon Industrial Park Association, use of tax credits to fund the critical road improvements with the following restrictions. There's a maximum $1 million Business Privilege Tax, or GRT, and a maximum of $3 million of use on certain allowable excise taxes, provided that the total amounts do not exceed $4 million. How you can help us, number one, the association has reached the BPT cap of $1 million, or almost reaching that cap, and is asking the legislature permission to use either the BPT or excise tax credits for funding the project, not to exceed, of course, the $4 million cap. Number two, we're asking consideration to allow any unused amount, if any, again up to the $4 million cap, to repair additional side streets that need these repairs badly. This is already proposed in 298-35, for which we appreciate very much. Your friends and constituents in that area will be most grateful. Number three, completion of the HIP road improvements are ahead of schedule and under budget. It's now scheduled for completion end of May instead of next August. However, as important as the early completion is to the thousands that use these roads, timely payments to contractors during the design, the construction management, and construction itself are as significant. A big shout-out, and sisus maase, to Senators Sinagastin, Barnes, Rajel, Pito Terlai, Moylan, and Senator Castro for sponsoring Bill 298-35. It's a great start as it incorporates number two above. We humbly ask the senators to include number one above also, i.e. to give HIPAA the option of utilizing either BPT or allowable excise tax. If the other senators would support, thousands of users, residents, and businesses would be grateful. As another example of benefit is that, I'm not sure how many senators live in the north, but Dediduljigo, but just as an example, going south or going west, there are heavy traffic jam during peak hours at several intersections, for instance, the Kmart-JFK intersection, that's a major gridlock. The airport junction is another one, and a major one is the ITC intersection, the Camp Watkins-GMH intersection, the Agania Loop, and several traffic lights. So when you're going from Dediduljigo to, for example, Shinahanya... Shinahanya, Agania Heights, Ordot, Salampagol, even Agania itself. If you use this alternate road that we now have, going through hamburger road, metal road, Harmon Industrial Park road, back to the back, uh, side of, uh, Kmart, through Tejon, you will have reached Ordot while the others are still negotiating Agania Loop. That's how good it is. And those, uh, those of us that are going north, the same thing applies in reverse. So with that, Sizus Masi for considering the above. Thank you very much. And have a safe, uh, safe time during this pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Shimizu, for your testimony. All right, uh, I believe Mr. Vince Areola is online now from the Department of Public Works. Director Areola, um, if you would, uh, begin first, uh, be sure to unmute. Should be in the upper right-hand corner of the box that you are in. Good morning. Please, uh, begin, of course, by, uh, formally introducing yourself and then please, uh, begin with your testimony. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very, uh, much, Senator and, uh, and other senators. Um, good to see you all and hope everyone is, is safe. My name is Vince Areola. I am the Director here at the Department of Public Works. Uh, I'm here to, uh, offer testimony on Bill two ninety-eight relative to the rehabilitation and improvement of the Harmon Industrial Park, more specifically the roads within the park. Uh, this bill seeks to amend the current statute that has established a public-private partnership and tax credits to certain private companies so that the main industrial roadway strip and other access roads into the park, uh, would be rehabilitated and, and modernized. It appears construction costs are below the design estimates and so additional roads within the park may be subject to improvement as well. While the bill primarily centers on tax credits as funding for the project, I, I will stay in my lane and offer support and coordination from DPW to ensure the project continues successfully. The roads are built according to plan and the park becomes an economic development zone we can all be proud of. We will continue to follow existing building and construction codes during permitting and construction and we will continue with our inspections of the project. I have worked with many of the prod, partners located in the park, including Mr. Frank Shimizu, who just, who was just the previous speaker. They are all dedicated and longtime business community individuals having a vested interest to improve our island and seeking a simple solution to better the roads in the park. I thank them for this initiative that improves the park area and I look forward to continued successes within the Harmon Industrial Park. Thank you very much, Senator, for inviting me to participate, uh, in support of this bill.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Areola, for your testimony this morning. All right, now we also have, uh, joining us today is, uh, Mr. Leonard Kai, uh, Mark Mansars and Glenn Leon Guero from Black Construction. Uh, I believe, uh, please, uh, if one is, are any of you planning on presenting testimony, oral testimony this morning?
Yes, Senator. Good morning, Senator Rigel and, uh,
Good morning.
and speakers today. My name is Leonard Kai. I'm the General Manager of, uh, Black Construction, uh, a member of the Harmon Industrial Park Association. And I'd like to, uh, express our appreciation for all of you attending today uh, in support of Bill two ninety-eight dash thirty-five. Um, we got on a little bit late, but I was able to hear and glean from, uh, Mrs. Shimizu's testimony about the progress on the job. And, uh, being in the construction business, um, obviously, uh, you know, support, um, Mrs. Shimizu's, uh, testimony. Uh, the project is, uh, is obviously ahead of schedule. It's, um, being constructed in conformance with the, uh, plans and specifications. Uh, we hope to, uh, conclude, uh, major paving, uh, over this, uh, coming Sunday and, and, uh, following Sunday, uh, which will, uh, you know, basically complete, uh, the balance of the, uh, uh, the main construction. And then, um, uh, with the remaining funds, uh, what the association is hopeful of, uh, of doing is to actually apportion, uh, those funds to the adjoining streets. There's, uh, seven main roadways that, um, that lead off of the, the main Harmon, Harmon Industrial Strip. And we intend to, uh, uh, use those funds to, uh, to pave, mill and pave the balance of those streets. This is a primarily a, a maintenance and, and enhancement project to the, um, existing roads that are degrading, um, you know, over the years. And, um, and without this, uh, this necessary, uh, resurfacing, uh, the roadways would even get even worse and degrade, uh, even further uh, and cost the government, uh, more money. So I think this project is, is definitely a, a positive, uh, program for the entire association and, and, uh, tenants and vendors that utilize the, uh, Harmon Industrial Park, uh, for the present and future, uh, of, of the area. Uh, thank you very much for your time and, uh, I'll turn the, um, the program over to, uh, Mark Mansar, our CFO. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, Senators. I am, uh, Mark Mansar, as Vice President of Black. And I kind of got pulled into this by the man at my, uh, left here, Mr. Kai. But, you know, I'm, I'm quite proud to be part of it. I've been, uh, working here in Harmon for, since nineteen ninety-one or coming on thirty years is upcoming. Uh, I really want to thank, uh, Frank Shimizu for invigorating the HIPAA program. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I gave up any improvements twenty years ago. So Frank, thanks for that enthusiasm, that effort and the, the work you've done to spearhead this program. My primary purpose is to explain the proposed changes. And I'm going to be a little technical here, but I, you know, we want to make sure you understand what we're looking for. On page two, line fourteen of the bill, uh, we basically remove the word "use" before "excise tax." Uh, the term "use excise tax" is not defined in Guam annotated code. Uh, we are moving forward, we're getting payments, but this term has created confusion. Um, quite frankly, if I were to compare it to anything, I would compare it to the, when we changed the property tax, when you increase the property taxes for those properties over, uh, a million dollars and they left out the word "or more." Was it necessary? I never know for sure. But it was just, it's more of a technical glitch. And so that, this is what we're looking at. We believe, uh, we've got, we, we'd like to correct this technical glitch to make it easier for our members to be able to help support it. Um, page two, lines eighteen and nineteen clarify the definitions of excise tax in accordance with the original discussions with Senator Cruz. Uh, Senator Cruz was very adamant five years ago about protecting his healthy future supply. Uh, it wasn't in the bill initially. Um, we've, it's given us a little bit of challenge, but, you know, we, hey, that was what was designed, wanted at the time. Again, it's more of a technical issue than anything else to make sure it's clear. And that's our goal here. This has always been a public-private type partnership. And, you know, quite frankly, it's been successful. On page three, uh, line four, the wording is different from page two, line, uh, eleven, I think it was. Technically, they mean the same, but we just thought, and it's in, it's in Frank's letter, that we would like to change the wording a little bit. So the wording is the same between these two places. Uh, so there is absolutely no confusion. We've gone through a few confusions as to terminology. That was just, it, it's a consistency issue. Um, on page five, line one, and this is probably one of the bigger ones. The word "approve" is accepted effectively superseded by lines three to twelve. Um, when we went through this, it was quite a challenge. Uh, we had to go back to the legislature to get approval for the plans in order to do this. Uh, it took us probably an extra nine months to get that particular step accomplished. In the new work we're proposing, the work is what Len called, uh, repaving. And it's, it's not actual any structural changes. We just want to go in there, we do a thing called milling, which is to kind of scrape off the top of the asphalt and we put nuanced asphalt on top of it. And that's what the, the proposed program is all about. Uh, we're not really changing anything. Uh, it's, uh, much more, I, I would compare it to painting a house, what we want to do now. Of course, we have forty and eighty ton trucks driving over it. And so I don't know which is worse, the sun, sun or heavy trucks. But, uh, I mean, that's really what we're looking for. We're not looking for, uh, any major structural changes. We're just looking for this, this maintenance program. Public Works does this all over the island. Uh, my last plea, and I've been actively involved in the pay side. Uh, HIPAA needs to pay over two million dollars for work already performed. Companies have been hesitant to apply for the credits due to the confusion of "use excise tax." We need your help. We need to try and get this two million dollars paid. It's not fair to the vendor. And believe me, I'm very aware of this as we speak, Vince. We've got eleven million dollars owed to Black. We've got four billings outstanding going back to January for Route Three. Any help you can give us is appreciated. Eleven million dollars is a lot of money for even someone like Black. Uh, people got to pay their bills and that's what we're really looking here. We're really looking to be able to pay our, to get this process, pay our two million dollars outstanding and to take it a step further. This has been a very successful program. This has been, it's proven this model can work. And I, you know, and, you know, I've been technically on the side of it, but I'm quite proud of what, uh, the team has done. Uh, Frank Shimizu has been the, the cheerleader and the leader. Uh, Mr. Kai here has, uh, twisted a lot of arms to make it happen for construction side. Uh, Mr. Monty's been a wonderful cheerleader. I mean, you see Monty on so many committees, incredible. And these three people have engaged other people to make really one of the best PPPs, private, public-private partnerships work. And so we, we'd just like to finish the job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, is, uh, Mr. Leon Guero, uh, will you be providing testimony as well?
Um, no, sir. Everything was mentioned before. Um, if you, the only thing I would just say is that this program is, as Mark said, a successful program. This is something that we support. Actually, when I started working for Black a year and a half ago, uh, uh, there were issues with, uh, with ingress egress. And I think that we've addressed that. And, uh, um, with this successful model, I think we, this is something we probably should, can and should carry on, uh, hopefully for the rest of the island. Thank you for, for supporting us and thank you for, for, uh, for this program, this PPP, I, I, I support it. Um, it provides smooth ingress and egress. When I first started, it took us, uh, roughly about anyways between a half hour to forty-five minutes to get out of the park, um, with the smooth, uh, roadways. Uh, it is now eased and, and, and you're seeing improvements. And it's a, it's a definite benefit to the community. Again, thank you all for, uh, for making this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Leon Guero. Okay, at this time, I believe we've exhausted the list of, uh, uh, people who showed up to provide public testimony. If I've missed anyone and if someone is currently online at this moment who would like to provide public, uh, testimony, uh, please do so. Indicate so by raising your hand. And I'll look on the screen and see if anyone is raising any hands for, uh, public testimony this morning. I think that's it. So we'll move on now to allow my colleagues the opportunity to ask questions of, uh, anyone here today. I'd like to begin first with, uh, the bill's primary sponsor, Senator St. Augustine. Do you have any, uh, questions for this panel? Senator St. Augustine, uh, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, no, Mr. Chair, as a matter of fact, I'd just like to ask my colleagues to support the bill. You know, I think, uh, most of the statements were all in support of this. Um, there's no fiscal impact to the general fund or the Health and Future Funds. Um, let's move on and let's help them finish up the project. And then, then we'll start looking out for more private partnership out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, Madam Speaker, any questions for the panel?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Halfaday and Mananas Sizus, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this Bill two ninety-eight dash thirty-five. And I want to thank the, uh, main author, Senator Joseph Augustine, for giving me the opportunity to be his, uh, second co-sponsor on this bill. And, and I want to share to, uh, everyone who spoke this morning in support of this bill. Uh, I truly believe that this is true public-private partnerships, uh, coming together, uh, with the government and with the stakeholders in the community to fix, uh, areas that are, are gravely needed. But more importantly, as our people, uh, continue to traverse, we, we have now, um, a positive outlook on how public-private partnerships are very successful and how they can work. And I just want to say thank you for gi- uh, uh, giving me this opportunity to support this effort. And as it was said earlier, um, this bill's intent is to extend, uh, the remaining available balances to authorize the tax credits and to do other projects and, and, uh, within that scope and, uh, within the Harmon Industrial Park. And I think that, um, it is a very positive thing, a positive thing for the community. But more importantly, uh, after seeing this successful story, I think that our policymakers and our government can look into positive opportunities for other projects that could be assisted on. So to the visionary of, uh, Uncle Frank Shimizu and Donklin Sizus Masi for seeing, uh, this vision and, and following it through. I know it's been a long time, um, but you know what? Uh, it doesn't stop here. And after this successful program is completed, there are probably other, uh, other, uh, opportunities that can help our community and our government. So thank you so very much. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity as your vice to speak in support of this measure. And thank the author for giving me second co-sponsorship. Sign him, Masi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Regina Lee, any, uh, questions for the panel?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to Senator Joe and all the co-sponsors of this measure. Um, I especially want to thank the members of our community who have, um, participated in our process by providing testimony this morning. Uh, many of my questions were actually answered, uh, via your testimony. And I'm really glad that the legislature was able to move forward, um, on this public-private partnership. I know we're back at the drawing board to try to improve and expand it. Um, I know that it has benefited a lot of the businesses and many families around our island. And my family personally, um, certainly benefited as my young children attended daycare and elementary schools in that area. And when you have a young kid that's potty training, you can't be stuck in traffic on a road. It's imperative that you get to where you need to go. So it's certainly made a huge difference for us. I really want to thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Shimizu and the entire team, everybody for coming together to advocate for this partnership. I think it's really been a win-win for our community. Um, one question that was answered by the Black team and others, but I just wanted to kind of open it up for anybody else who wanted to contribute testimony is maybe for some senators who might be on the fence about this bill, what would you say to senators that in your mind would happen if the legislature did nothing? If this bill did not move forward, in your mind, what would be the consequence? Uh, maybe, Mr. Shimizu, if you'd like to share your thoughts?
Sure. Um, if, um, if nothing is done, uh, the, um,
the Harmon Industrial Park will continue to deteriorate. The roads will continue to be broken up, particularly during heavy rains, and flooding occurs. And you can't tell the potholes once your area is flooded. You can't, there's no way to determine how deep those potholes are. So not only are trucks or other vehicles, but those that are coming into the park risk damaging their cars. Also, in the future, we have visions of mitigating other or doing other improvements. For instance, the, this bill just provides for the basic improvement for the major roads. And we're asking the senators to, since we're under budget and we have some monies left over, allow the association to fix critical areas that are also in need of repair. That's my take on this. If nothing is done, the area continues to be like a ghetto. It's an embarrassment. And so now, I'm not saying that the embarrassments are eliminated. There still are. But at least it's starting to look like an industrial park, what an industrial park should look like. It's taken almost six years to move dirt, but I think it's worth it. I mean, during those five or six years, I was ready to throw in the towel. But thank goodness for the team that worked closely together. We continued, and here we are. We're almost at the finish line.
That's right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shimizu. I'm so grateful that you didn't throw in the towel. There are many times where I feel like throwing in the towel too, but I appreciate your advocacy, and I hope that you continue to help guide us in these efforts. Again, I want to thank the author of this measure, the co-sponsors, and thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the time. Titas Masi.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Therese Toulari, any questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you all for your testimony and for your leadership in this project. The road is very beautiful, the improvements. I agree with you in singing their praises. It's a huge improvement. My only question, and of course, on the bill, there's two parts of this bill. The part that says we're going to use any unused tax credits for improvement of additional roads. I have no objection to that, and that, of course, makes sense. And thank you for that leadership also. I guess my only question is really for the government side, and for the government, the impact of the change in the language, as they said earlier, you know, Speaker Cruz was very specific in which taxes were going to list there. And they're saying it's a technical change. So I guess if I could just get Gita to confirm. I know the money amount will be the same in the end, but the different taxes. So if we change that word and take out the word "use" from what the statute says, "use excise tax", and we leave it to be "excise tax", what, where would the impacts be? And does that further impact the Healthy Futures Fund outside of simply the tobacco tax exemption?
Thank you for that question. I would have to defer that question, however, to the Department of Revenue and Taxation as Gita is strictly the administrator of, you know, we receive the receipts from HIPPA, from the Harmon Industrial Park Association. We utilize that to see that it's in compliance with what was set forward in the law. And then we then give that to them, give them the credits that they can then present to DRT and apply to the taxes. So as far as the aggregate impact on use or excise, that I would have to defer to them.
All right. And then according to the original law, Public Law 33-191, Gita was supposed to be submitting an annual report. Are you familiar with whether? I haven't been able to find one. So I wanted to see how they broke down the taxes there. If there is one, you could submit that, yeah.
We have not submitted a report, but we do have one that we can give to you that I'm using to reference.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, according to the law, it was supposed to break down, yeah, which credits have been taken and by who. So, and
Oh, yes.
All right. And then if I could also, so for DPW, the, when we talked about this before in the last term, we talked about the design at that time, and the amount was $300,000. So are we saying, I mean, no, I'm sorry. The question for you is, they said they took care of the easement issues, and flooding has also taken care of on the roads that have been approved, improved under this statute?
Yes, ma'am. The portions that they're paving, those are, they're not too filled with flooding issues. I think it's further back, further south in, within the park that where we do have flooding issues. We did address one area, and that's between, that's in like the southwestern side of the park, which is a back road to Home Depot. We did, Public Works, in partnership with the association, finished up that area, and we put a couple culverts to help with the flooding issues. But I think overall, I think there's, I think we have one, if not two, more areas of flooding we have to take care of. The issue there is, it is on public-private, it's on our private property. So that's going to be an issue we're going to have to take care of somehow. Yeah.
All right. And sorry, Ms. Manjola. Gita, if you could just confirm, what is the total amount used so far? Is it 3.7 million?
No, $644,808.
Okay, so the remainder, so part of the bill says that there's a remainder in the architectural, but I heard some testimony that says there's a remainder in the construction side. So if we could just clarify that right now, if it's only 644 used so far, then it looks like there must be a remainder on both. I don't know if
I believe it was the A&E that was already paid?
Okay, $300,000 in A&E full.
One moment, let me confer with my, with our compliance manager.
Maybe that, yeah, there's no this, Mr. Shimizu, or, yeah.
Hello? Hello? This is Mr. Man, with construction. We, there's been, there's been two payments applied, and one of them was from Black Construction, where we used up almost all of the ability of the GRT. All right? So now what's left for us to try and get the credits for is under excise tax.
Thanks, sir.
And excise tax has been a little more confusing because of that terminology, "use excise tax". And it's created confusion, and it's created some concern by companies to participate. All right? So we're having trouble getting additional companies to participate. We, this month, finally got our first payment through the excise tax using the fuel excises at this point. And that was about $75,000. One of the struggles we're having, right, is trying to get others to participate. And so by the correction of the, you know, taking that word "use" out of it, it clarifies it for everybody what we meant in the first place. Yeah, there's been different interpretations. One interpretation was that they meant to say, "use the excise tax", all right? You know, and it's been, it's just been a challenge there. So we have, as I mentioned earlier, we owe, we owe the contractor $2 million for work he's done. Okay? So we are, we're nearing completion, and our challenge here, first and foremost, is to be able to pay what we owe. And that's why we encourage you to move on it so we can get more companies to participate so that we can get the contractor paid. Right now, we see the fuel companies have been stepping up and forward. We tried one with a fuel. It seemed to have worked. It went into revenue taxes, we speak today. It's the twentieth. So it went into them today. We think everything was okay on it. Gita helped us the last week, even being close, to try and get all the stamps and the official work done. But it's been a challenge, and we're just trying to overcome that challenge to pay what we owe, to pay for what's done. The second phase of it is about 1.3 million left?
1.1.
$1.1 million left for us to do this repaving type program, which I described as a repainting of some of the side roads. And that's what we're trying to do. So we've used about 2.9 on the current project, or will use about 2.9. And we're probably three weeks from completing. So we're really trying to get it paid more than anything else. There's only been two payments up to this point been able to be applied against it. And it's been us, Gita's been working with us very well, but it's been a challenge because of this wording. And so that's really been our biggest challenge. And we just don't want to hold the contractor hostage for $2 million. You know, we can't, all right, we're going to give you $70,000 a month.
All right. Could you, could you please clarify when this, changing the word, removing the word "use" from "use excise tax", what types of taxes do you foresee being used now? You mentioned the fuel, and then the, and then you, we exempt, yeah, the bill's going to exempt the tobacco taxes. What about, what others might be used under this category?
Frank, you want to take that?
Yeah, just the other taxes that are simple to use would be the, it's not going to allow us to use the tobacco taxes because the original intent was, that's over 75% of the Healthy Futures Funds. So that's not going to be touched. But in addition to the, the only other large, steady excise tax that is out there would be possibly the tax on beer, wine, and spirits.
All right, okay, that's what I was wondering. I'm going to check with DOE, but yeah. So my understanding is that those also go to the Healthy Futures Fund, which is what we're using now for funding, you know, hospital and other projects. So I'll just take a look at that. But, and then, but thank you, thank you all. So one, just one more question, DPW. Did, oh, DPW, are you aware of the roads that they intend to, the side roads now that they intend to improve? And is this where you would say is the priority? Do you agree with these as the priority for use of these tax credits?
Yes, I think, Senator, besides the main thoroughfare, the main road there in the Harmon Industrial Park, I can say without question, every other road, access road and artery from that road is in need of milling and repaving, as was discussed earlier. So clearly, the roads there need help. And
But have you seen lists? But have you seen the specific list of which ones they would be able to improve for the remainder that's left?
No, I think that's going to come once this bill, once this bill is passed. They'll give us a list, they'll give us the measurements, and we'll go up there and make sure that the easements and the rights of way are true and correct.
All right.
Very well with them, Senator.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator Toulari, for your questions. Senator Kelly Marsh Titano?
Titas Masi, Mr. Chair. Along with everyone else who's preceded me, I'm glad to hear of these improvements. The condition of the road in the Harmon Industrial Park was one of the roughest on island, I believe. And I've been here since the 60s. I've seen most of our roads, and they, they were really rough. And parts of them, these arteries are still really rough. I, along with others, have had to worry about damage to the car just to try to patronize business there. And so it has made going to see the businesses there less attractive. And that's the exact opposite of what an industrial park is about and an economic zone is about. In fact, just recently, to get to one of the entities that was there, I used Google Maps because I hadn't been to that particular entity, and I had driven down, I hadn't been able to find it. And I did end up along those arteries. And honestly, it's the biggest pothole I've ever seen in my life. When I tell people that story about getting lost there, I say that my car went in, drove in there for a while, and then had to climb back out that pothole. It was so enormous. So I definitely really understand the level of what you've been dealing with for a very long time and the importance of improving these so that we are supporting the businesses that are there and helping build up our economic zone. And there are important aspects to this bill that I think are very important for us all to recognize. And that is, as we've heard a bit thus far, that DPW has that continued responsibility of having oversight, of approving plans, of being consulted with, and so forth. And I think that part is very important as well as staying within the capped amount. I think by us examining this bill, it provides good incentive for other such projects to be finding cost-cutting measures so that they can indeed be doing more with what they have. With this, it's been spoken about a little bit about how much has been paid out, how much is still owed for the construction, which is that $2 million, and how much more is left to be able to work with these arteries. So my question is, where are we? So that we understand what we're talking about in impact, where are we, is the association at or Gita at in actually collecting funds? You mentioned that there's been some hesitancy, and so we do want to remove any barriers so that we're not, you know, we're allowing the bill previously, the laws previously in the bill now to live up to its intention. If there hasn't been the $2 million collected for paying off the construction, where are we at with the collection? And how much more of the $4 million is left to be collected? Or applied, whatever the proper term there is, committed to, applied, collected? So I would ask Gita if they know, and then the association, those two entities maybe have a handle on that?
Certainly. I can speak to the amount. So thus far, $575,000 has been authorized under BPT, and 1.725 has been authorized under, currently presented as use excise tax. Now, of the 575 presented in BPT, that was utilized by Black Construction, and it has been exhausted. Okay? Now, where the HIPPA is running into the, is running into the issue is with this use excise tax because we have presented $500,000, or $500,000 has been authorized to SPPC and $300,000 to Ambrose, which at this point in time are the utilization of those tax credits under use excise. Again, Gita is the, Gita looks at the paperwork. We say it complies with the law. We give them the tax credit certificate. They go to Revenue and Taxation. If Revenue and Taxation doesn't, says there's no such If revenue and taxation doesn't, says there's no such thing as use excise, then they'll reject it. Right? And so this is the rock and the hard, this is where they're caught between the rock and a hard place. And so right now, 2.3 is authorized. 644,800 has been drawn down, which leaves a balance of 1.655,199. And then this fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year, there will be an additional 250,000 in BPT and 750,000 in use excise tax, which of course, the objective of HIPAA today is to modify, or is to modify that, the language on that.
Okay. So I was trying to write down all the numbers as you were having them go out. So of the, of the monies that can be committed, have, has everything been committed up to the 4 million, and then it's just a matter of getting the authorization? Or are there still companies out there that need to be addressed as to committing additional monies?
I think that's a question for HIPAA because they know where it is along the stages of construction.
So if I can hear from HIPAA, please? Maybe Mr. Frank Shimizu?
Hello. This is, this is Black again. What we've got, this month, we had our first draw under the excise tax for SPPC, South Pacific Petroleum or 70s. As I say, today, the actual return was filed. And once, once we get through this, our expectation is that the other two fuel companies are ready to step up, but they're looking to see that this process completely works. And as I say, the biggest question mark has been this definition of use excise tax because it does not exist. And so, you know, we get back to the whole concept of what was originally meant. Well, we know what was meant. It was excise tax. But we've still got this little kink, and that's what we're trying to get corrected. So once that gets corrected, we're actually shooting to get a second fuel company applying for the June payment. It takes us, it takes us about three weeks to work with GITA to get this through. So, you know, once we're able to validate that the SPPC payment functioned properly, then we've got the other two fuel companies ready to come online. One of them this, this month, one of them probably the following month, which will help us to expedite these payments. Initially, when we first thought of it, I'll be honest with you, when we did it five years ago, and we presented it to the legislature, basically, it was Ambrose and Black who stood up, stood up and said, we'll be the ones to do the paperwork, we'll be the ones to, you know, process and back fund this. We run into a bit of a problem with the Healthy Future Fund, and, but we're, we're now, as I say, moving towards the fuel taxes, the fuel excise taxes, their excise taxes, to accomplish this. So we expect some movement. Now, as GITA mentioned, we can only go up, until October 1st, we can only go up to 2.4 or 5 million. I don't have the exact number. Then as of October 1st, the next increment comes. And then the final increment doesn't even occur till October 1st, 2021. So there'll be about 500,000 that takes us all the way out to 2021 before we can actually collect and pay from a cash flow standpoint. And, you know, I think the association may try to help fund this. I don't think we want to push the work out that far. You know, we haven't really come up with a solution to that, but that's where we're moving, that's what we're headed towards as we speak right now from a cash standpoint.
Sadaoui Masri, both to GITA and HIPAA for some of that clarification, and definitely to everybody who's been part of the association, Sadaoui Masri for putting in all of that time. You know, you outlining some of the time that's involved, it helps people understand how committed you've been to this and what a service you've really done for the community at large by putting in three weeks here and nine months there and so forth. So is my understanding correct? We were talking about going up to 2.4 million for this year. How much of that are you looking to still get committed for this year? Are we close to the 2.4 million? Or is the majority of that still what needs to be committed, hopefully, from these two fuel companies?
We hope, we hope to get.
Yeah, at this point, you know, to be honest with you, we, we don't actually know the fuel companies. We think we've got the smallest of the three. So we expect the other two to be a little bit greater than what we're in this week. So I think by, you know, we're hopeful that if it all goes well, we'll have them cleared by August or September. We'd sure like to take the cloud off of the definition use excise tax. You know, that would make life easier, make everybody a bit more comfortable with doing this. I mean, that cloud has been a bit of a problem for us. But, you know, I think we can probably get the current bills pretty much paid. I think we're a little short until October 1st, maybe about 300,000 short. And we've got to wait till October 1st before we can go in for that. But I think the rest of it, we can probably do this year if all goes well with the fuel companies.
Okay. So kind of the bottom line is that somewhere along the lines, and thank you again for your diligence in seeing this through. It doesn't sound like it's, well, it sounds like it takes quite a bit of time and commitment, but, so we are looking at 2.4 million being committed this year with your continued efforts. So I think that's basically where I was trying to get at with this particular question. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll wait to the next round if there's going to be a second round.
No, actually, we'll just finish up with this round, Senator Talahe. So if you have, I mean, excuse me, Senator Titanow, so if you have any more questions, please go ahead and ask your questions now.
Okay. So I just wanted a little bit of understanding of, I'm definitely a huge supporter of creative cost-cutting measures, and I was just hoping you would give us a little bit of insight. Because we have had the Department of Public Works involved, we're assured that the quality was not compromised, and certainly, I know that wouldn't be the intention, but if you could just explain a little bit so we understand where some of those cost-cutting measures were, were able to, where they came from or how they were able to play in to this?
Senator Titanow, let me ask, answer that question. One of the things that we did as part of the cost-cutting measures, unlike the main thoroughfares, which are dictated by federal highway specifications, we went to a federal government specification for the asphalt, which reduced the cost of the asphalt design mix significantly and allowed us to increase the amount of asphalt paved roads throughout this, this entire program. And that was, that was in concert and, and assistance by Public Works, Mr. Ariola. So we worked in concert with Public Works to ensure that the design, you know, met the minimum requirements and, you know, specifications were followed to ensure that we provided a quality product overall that would stand the test of time until, you know, like anything else, you need to maintain roadways. So I think right now, what we have is a, is a product that is going to, you know, be a good product for years to come. So that was one of the major cost-cutting elements that we, we took into account. And also, on this improvement, what we did was we, we milled the surface, the existing surface of the, the existing roadway by about a half an inch, and we put a new surface on the, on the existing surface without compromising the existing structure of the roadway. When I say structure, the base of the roadway. And, and that actually improved the overall structural integrity of the roadway with the amount of traffic and heavy traffic that the roadways take on a regular basis. The Harmon Industrial Park is the, you know, it's kind of the crux of major business throughout the community for Guam. And so, you know, it's served by many, many different vendors with heavy trucks, including Black and Ambrose and Pepsi and, you know, so many different vendors, the bus companies I hear, Poppinburg and other bus companies. And so you have a constant flow of heavy traffic. And so going in, we recognized that, and we provided a good quality product that, again, will stand the test of time. I hope that answered your, answered your question.
Yes, and it's really good to hear that there were federal regulations that were followed, that you had that in mind. And this is one of the ways I think your being involved was very important because you're very cognizant of the fact that it's going to be heavy construction trucks and really having the business community be, be part of this, that it really informed perhaps in certain ways, this project, and making sure that while looking for cost-cutting, it wasn't going to be cutting any of the quality. So those elements that you shared really helped me understand the quality of the road, which of course is what the community wants. They want a road that will stand for a long period of time and have that really strong structural integrity. So those were my two questions, Sadaoui Masri, Mr. Chair, and everybody here for providing those answers.
Thank you, Senator Titanow. Senator Jim Moylan, any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the panel. Gentlemen, I truly appreciate your time and the clarification of this. I think it's quite simple in my mind. Get, get rid of the word "use." Get rid of it. So I think we can move forward on that. You made it quite clear that you have other folks that are very interested in supporting and putting in their share so they can avail to the credits that we are not going over and that we are completing the job, and we did such a great job on it, so much so that we can even add to a little of the side roads because of our, how we do things right in private partner, business, public partnership. And I hope this type of partnership continues because we definitely need this, and you have given us great examples on how great it has done so far for the commercial businesses and for the residents and for the customers that come into your area. So I really, I want to keep your time short. I appreciate your time, gentlemen, and I so want to allow you to get back to your job so you can generate the business that you do, that creates the BBT that we desperately need in the government of Guam. So thank you so much. You have my full support for this bill. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Telotanagui?
Sadaoui Masri, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for participating today. And a lot of my questions were already answered and some still unanswered, to tell you the truth, the difference between the use tax and excess tax and all that, you know, that was spoken about. And then I'm, I'm reviewing the original bill that was intended for BPT. And so I guess one of the things I'd like to stress upon is for GITA to provide us that information because based on the original law, it requires a yearly report. And this law was signed by Governor Calvill in December of 2016. We are now, one, two, three, you know, almost four years into this, you know, this law, and we still have not received a report. So Melanie, I know you just got in there and you have so much on your hands right now. Appreciate all the good work you're doing at GITA. Greatly appreciate that. And I know you've always answered my questions every time I called you and stuff, but I really appreciate if I can get this directly. I know it's going to the chair, but if you can send it to me. So I can find, follow this chronologically in order, and so appreciate that. The other one was HIPAA, I have a question. Frank Shimizu, how many times do you guys meet, your group meets? Just out of curiosity. Can anyone? How many times does the association meet, Frank?
Could you repeat that question again, Senator?
Off the day, Frank. Good to see you. Say hi to Memming for me. How many times a year do you guys get together to meet to discuss your project for the Harmon Drag Show?
How many times a year discuss, discuss with them?
Yeah, because HIPAA is an organization, association. How many times a year do you guys get together to discuss this? Is it open to the public? Can we come in and, and listen to what you guys are doing on a project basis?
It's open to the public, you know, but we don't, we don't give out notices, just like any association, if they want to meet, they, they meet upon themselves. The HIPAA Association has close to 100 members. So in order to get our members together, we're, you know, my experience is that the more cooks there are in the kitchen, the less. So we're kind of limited to, to just a few of us so that we can move the project forward. Even, even then, it's just taken us over five years to dig dirt, to start. So, yeah, how many, how many times have we met? Many, many times, hundreds.
Okay. Has, Frank, has GITA been a part of your meetings whenever you do meet, at least to give them notice that you're having a meeting, considering that they, they basically monitor this for you and oversee any, and also assist you, which I've heard earlier that from one of your members that they've been very good at assisting you with DPW and any other kind of permits that are needed. Do you at least give GITA a call to make sure that they, they attend?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the main, main elements of this project or this process is GITA's involvement, and they've been most helpful. Now Melanie, recently, and John Sanicolas have been helping us move the project along and approve paperwork and prior to submission to revenue tax.
Okay. If you can also tell me, Frank, I know you're very familiar with, with the process since 2016, when it was first signed into law. I also noted that the bill only allowed for four years. Was there another bill that was introduced earlier to extend this project past the four year marker? Because we're looking at coming up at four years now. And I believe...
I believe there's a bill already approved that extended the deadline.
Okay, great. Okay. And how long is that deadline for?
It was answered, I'm not sure the exact days, but it was answered by Mark, I think, I believe, earlier.
Okay.
During, when Mark was explaining the historical background of the process.
Okay. I'll find that bill. Yeah, I just want to make sure it has been extended if there was a bill that, run ahead and do it. Well, I appreciate everybody's time. I'm a great advocate for public-private partnerships, and it gives me pride to know that, you know, this is one project that's been going and doing very well, and I continue to support what you're doing. And I'd like us to see, have the ability actually to utilize funding more on the BPT, you know, and, you know, less on the Healthy Futures Fund. You know, I'm a real advocate in using that kind of funding for things that have to deal with health, you know, and that was all our, our purpose to do so. But I, this is a law that was already signed into law, and I'd like to see this project go. and I'd like to see this project go through fruition and meet its goal. So you have my support on this measure. I just want to make sure that during the session, when we go over, that the language is clear because it's kind of confusing Excess Tax, which is Use Tax. You know, we have to make sure that we're following what's already currently in law. And any kind of amendments that we make is true to form and the intent of this legislation. So again, thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. Sajid Masih.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui, for your questions. With that, I believe all of my colleagues have had a chance to ask questions. But I'll go ahead and just, one last time, if any of my colleagues have any more questions, please raise your hand if you'd like to ask anything else. If not, all right, Senator Sinagastin, if you would like to close on your bill? Any closing statement?
A very simple one there, Mr. Chair. The proposed amendments reflected in the bill, a statement from BMR, or administrative in nature, do not physically impact the general fund or the Healthy Future Funds appropriation for this year. I just believe that, Mr. Chair, my colleagues, all we're doing is extending and supporting the projects that HIPAA is doing. And if we want to go into details, call the agencies yourself and get it. And let's just stick to this bill and not extend beyond the bill. Let's work with this bill, let's just move this forward, and let's get this project over with. And then we can talk about any future private partnership with the industry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. All right, that will just about do it for this public hearing. I just want to reiterate and remind Ms. Melanie Mendiola at GIDA to please provide my committee with that report that was requested earlier, I believe, from Senator Toulahi. Or I forget who asked, but there was a report that was mentioned earlier. And you indicated that you did have that report. If you could provide that to the committee, I'll share it with everyone else. All right, the committee will continue to. Thank you. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within 10 business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flora Street, Suite 906 of the DNA Building in Hagatna. You may also send your statements to us at or you can send it by fax to 475-4768. For the record, I would like to note the committee has received written testimonies from Ms. Marie Leon Guero, Mr. Ed R. Ilau, and Ms. Paige Butler. And those, of course, will be added to our committee report. Thank you for all of your participation today. This hearing is now adjourned. It is 10:33 a.m. Thank you all for your participation.